Evening, everybody. This is Mayor Cornell Harvey along with the City Commissioner, Commissioner Julie Martin, Commissioner Johnny Kason, Commissioner Vincent Williams, and also Mayor Pro Tem Felicia Harris. I'd like to call to order a city council meeting dated Wednesday, September the 15th. We will have our invocation led by Commissioner Julie Martin, and our place of leisure will be started by our own Mayor Pro Tem Felicia Harris.
Thank you. If you will, please bow your heads. Lord, we thank you for this day, for we know it is truly a gift from you. We ask that you would be with those who might be in harm's way, those surviving COVID, those that protect our citizens, our city, our country. Lord, we realize what a servant heart those people have, and we are truly, truly grateful. We ask that you would be with us this evening as we deliberate on decisions for the city, that we might have clear minds and clear hearts in order to be able to determine the right path to take. So we ask that you would be present with us during this meeting in Jesus's name. Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. And again, thank everyone for getting on board with us. This is a virtual meeting. And is there anything to add or delete on our agenda this evening? Here in our first item on our agenda is our introduction. The introduction, it says, introduction of the new director of neighborhood and community service. Our city manager, Ms. Regina McDuffie, will be presenting this.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. I have the pleasure of introducing you to Ms. Sabrina Nixon. We did go through an extensive search for, and of course, it has taken some time for us to fill this position. So I'm thankful to have someone onboarding very soon. We did advertise very well for the positions. We interviewed five candidates and selected Ms. Nixon as our new director for neighborhood and community services. Mrs. Nixon is very familiar with the Brunswick community. She's been here, lived here for over 24 years, originally from Tipton, Georgia. Her and her husband has a home here, and she has been involved in the community for a long, long time. She worked at the Glynn County School System and Chatham County School System, most recently as a school psychologist. She has this extensive educational background. I won't go into all of the details, but she does hold degrees, specialist of psychology, school psychology, and a doctorate, Doctor of Education and Human Services Administration. She has worked in the community with nonprofits and social services over the extent of her time here in the community, and she has really shown some great enthusiasm about joining the Brunswick team. She is scheduled to start on Monday, October 4th, and Mrs. Nixon is on the Zoom meeting, and I'll allow her to make a couple of comments, but if you all have some questions, certainly she and I will be happy to answer them. Ms. Nixon?
Thank you, Ms. McDuffie, for such a gracious introduction. I am so very excited about joining Team Brunswick. I look forward to every challenge that may come, and I also look forward to having Ms. McDuffie, the City of Brunswick, and the Commissioner improve the City of Brunswick.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Nixon or either our city manager, commissioners?
Welcome, welcome.
Thank you.
So welcome and congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes, welcome aboard. Glad to have you.
Thank you so very much.
Any way we help, let us know.
Okay, absolutely.
Well, I have told Mrs. Nixon she is going to be championing some of our most important endeavors over the next year or two in helping with the reestablishing the city recreation and also with the housing programs that we have looking to work with, and also just reinvigorating our neighborhood and planning assembly. So she has her hands full. She will hopefully hit the ground running, and there won't be a lack of work, believe me.
Looking forward to it, Mrs. McDuffie.
I'm sure there won't be a lack of work. And thank you, Ms. Nixon, for agreeing to come on board and join this team. This team is a great team. I tell you, we only, we only take the best, and you are one of the best. So we, we are glad you have joined us.
Yes, I am so excited to be here. Very excited.
All right. Thank you. All right, commissioners, let's move right along. Item to be considered for approval, consider approval of September 1st, 2021, regular scheduled meeting minutes. It was in our packet. If there are any corrections, please let us know. If not, we entertain a motion for...
Motion to approve.
Motion second to approve our regular scheduled meeting minutes of September 1st. Are there any further questions or comments? Here in all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any posers? Hearing nothing from the opposing side, I believe the ayes have it. Thank you very much, commissioners. All right, item number three, consider approval of coastal incentive grant agreement with Georgia Department of Natural Resources for East Brunswick Tide Control. Garo Aberson, our city engineer and, and city engineer, is public works director, is presenting. Mr. Aberson?
Good afternoon. This is an item for approval of a coastal incentive grant from Georgia Department of Natural Resources. As you know, we have our storm drain outfalls drained to the, to the, to the local marshes from our storm drainage system. We have 31 of those outfalls throughout the city. 18 of those outfalls are located on the, on the east side along the Highway 17 corridor on the east side of the city. And of course, one of the, one of the biggest problems with those outfalls is high tide flooding, which, which is the tide because of the elevation of the outfall compared to the marsh and the river. At, at high tide, that outfall is inundated and water flows backwards through the storm drainage system and can, and can flow backwards through the inlets flowing into the roads, flooding roadways, properties, and other areas. So, and that, that is only getting worse with the sea level rise and the current climate conditions that, that high tide flooding has happened, happening more and more frequently and at a more and more severe level over the last few years. So one of the items we've looked at is tide control devices on these outfalls, which is, which is a device that's installed in the pipe, which only allows one-way flow. It would only allow outlet flow or only allow stormwater to flow out through the pipe. It would prevent these devices, prevent stormwater, I mean tide water, from flowing backwards into the pipes. Because this is such of an issue, this tide control project is listed in our stormwater master plan as one of our priority projects. The, it is, excuse me, it's listed as priority project number five for outfall control on Highway 17, and then Ports Authority on the west side of the town is listed as priority project number 11 as well. So we went out and we applied for a coastal incentive grant through the Georgia Department of Natural Resources. Coastal incentive grants are grants which provide funds for study and design and permitting of different drainage structures or, or stormwater improvements, resiliency projects. And in the application of this project or for this grant, we were conscious as well, we decided to select Highway 17 or the east side of town as the project area and tried to also consciously select areas that would kind of mesh or coordinate with other projects listed in our stormwater master plan, and a couple of those areas are the Lanier Boulevard or Lanier Plaza area, the Macon-Talmage Outfall, the Wildwood Drive Outfall, the Wildwood Ditch Outfall, and the Riverside Neighborhood Outfalls. Those are also priority projects within our stormwater master plan, and actually, we have design work underway for improvements in those drainage basins as well. So we applied for the coastal incentive grant. It was approved by DNR, and the scope of the grant will be to survey the outfalls, investigate and design the storm or the tide valve structures, achieve the necessary CMPA or GDOT permitting, coordinate with other communities who have used these type structures in the past, maybe Tybee Island or in Camden coastal communities which have used these, and then share the learning and what we've learned through, through commission meetings or through DNR presentations. One of the big items included with this coastal incentive grant is information sharing and education component of that. So, you know, coordination with other communities as well as education of, of our end results of our project will be big in this. Cost-wise, we received grant funding of $119,783. The grant will provide $57,000 of this, and the remaining $62,000, almost $63,000 will be provided through both in-kind services of our staff and personnel working on these projects, and also a cash match of $41,580, which we have budgeted for in our fiscal year 22 stormwater utility budget. So we've, we've budgeted for the cash match portion of this. So what we're asking for, for this agenda item is approval of the, to sign the grant agreement and allocate the cash match portion or the match portion for the coastal incentive grant.
Garo, I see that you've been relegated to your car for this discussion. I'm so sorry.
Yeah, that's right. I intended to get home. A couple of things came up, so.
You had to pull over roadside. I love that. These are, these are the times we're in, so.
You're doing a good job, though. I'll have to...
Yeah.
Just don't raise your cell phone up there, buddy. Your computer is okay. I guess we're fortunate that we can, can do this, huh?
So, yeah, let me ask you this. You said that we were granted 119, but that's the total project cost. So we weren't, we weren't actually granted that. That's just, that's just the total cost.
The total project cost, that's right. The grant will provide $57,000.
Okay, okay.
The difference, this almost $63,000 will come from us through cash match and salary, in-kind salary match.
Okay, okay. So we actually granted the $57,000. Okay.
That's right.
I want to take this opportunity, which is a little bit of an aside, but I did attend the regional, Garo, would you say it's regional or was it more, I mean, it wasn't national. It was more regional climate conference?
Right, yeah. I think most of the attendees were, were regional.
Okay.
Exactly.
And I want to toot my horn for Garo and all the work he's done for stormwater management, really all of the employees within the city who have taken this on as a focus area because it's, we really deemed it as a focus area. But it was great to see on a regional level that Garo and our community was leading the forefront on several paths in recognition of the effects of rising sea level. I mean, whether you agree or disagree with why we have a rising sea level is a whole nother element, but the fact that we do have it and it is a reality and we need to deal with it, I was very proud of our city and our community for being representative of how to step out there and put measures in place and do things to protect our community, not just now, but for the future. So I felt like I needed to say that, and I think we are looked at as a spotlight community for taking the initiative to do the things that need to be done in order to protect our citizens and our community. So, thank you, Garo.
Thank you.
Thank you. It is true, Commissioner Martin, that is true, exactly what you said, and we will continue to do that. I think this commission is one of the best. I think our staff is, is the best too, as I said before, talking about, as we move forward to do all the things we need to do. So commissioners, any further question for Mr. Garo? Okay, if not, we have before us, entertain a motion, please.
Make a motion that we approve the request for approval of the coastal incentive grant agreement with Georgia Department of Natural Resources for East Brunswick Tide Control.
Second.
It been motion second for, for, what's the approval, excuse me, let me get my, excuse me, consider approval for the coastal incentive grant with Georgia Department of Natural Resources for the East Title Control. Are there any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposers have the same right. Hearing nothing from the opposing, I believe the most motion, that motion is approved. Thank you. Thank you very much, Garo. I see you're still here again. Consider approval, consider approval agreement with Georgia Water and Environmental Services in the amount of $98,580 for design and permitting of the title control structures as designated in the coastal incentive grant Tide Control Project.
Yes, this, this agreement is for the actual design and permitting work in that agreement that we, that we're just discussing, the coastal incentive grant. Georgia Water and Environmental Services is one of our approved vendors, approved engineering consultants, and they will be handling the actual surveying, the actual design investigation and design of these title control structures, the permitting, going through the permitting process, coordination with the regulatory agencies and those kind of things, as well as organizing the lunch and learn presentations and the, and the fact-finding presentations of what we learn throughout this project. And then the deliverables of this project, what they will give us in the end will be a set of construction plans and, and a permit to move forward with installation of these title control structures. Now, installation and/or construction is not included in this. This is strictly design and permitting, but at the end of this agreement, we will have, have in hand what we need to move forward with installation of these structures. The cost of their agreement is $98,580. Again, the coastal incentive grant, like we discussed, will provide $57,000 of that, of that cost, and we will provide the remaining $41,580 through our cash match. And then, of course, there's, there's salary and, and other considerations that will go towards the grant as well. But this agreement is for $98,580 for Georgia Water and Environmental to move forward with design and permitting of these tide control structures.
Questions, commissioners, for Mr. Aberson?
I have a question. Garo, if we can take, for instance, 1300 block of Norwitz Street that we're all familiar with downtown, we just had that huge re- structuring of, of all the infrastructure underneath at Mansfield and Newcastle, but we've, we've, we've still had flooding, significant flooding for some of those shop owners and folks in that 1300 block. So if we, if we can go back and retrofit, I mean, I'm not sure if I'm saying this correctly, if this is what needs to be done, but would we retrofit now that we're on the backside of that whole year-long process, that we have to retrofit it so that we don't get backflow from tidal water? Is, is, is that the final solution, or do we even know?
Um, you know, I don't, I don't know that it's the final solution. The Mansfield project did include tide control on those new pipes that went in. There is, there are tide valves on Mansfield Street, but that, that's the only outfall, I believe, on that side of town that has any kind of tide control. The others, north and south of there, do not. But, and I think it has helped with high tide flooding on Mansfield Street. Now, it's, it's possible every once in a while, a piece of debris can get caught in these things and keep them open and allow that tide water to flush back. But even when they're functioning properly, they're not the end-all solution. They do keep tide water from flowing back, but if it's, if it's a rain event at high tide when it can't discharge, all you have really is the capacity of that pipe. So when that pipe fills up and it can't discharge against the tide, you know, then, then you're back to a rainfall flooding situation. We have prevented the high tide flooding, but we still sometimes have rainfall flooding situation, if that makes sense. But there may be some other things that we can look at, you know, possible additional storage areas, maybe some infiltration areas to try to, try to reduce that runoff. The idea of a pump station was brought up the other day. There, there's a lot of expense to that. You know, I don't, I don't think that's the number one solution, but it may be, that may be what we end up with. So there are some things we can, we can look at for that area. And I believe, I think I talked a couple of weeks ago about Ms. McDuffie made a presentation about using part of our ARPA funds for, for some storm drainage improvement, and that's one of the areas we're thinking about, is that side of town kind of a corresponding project to this CIG grant on the east side of town is doing something similar, tide control and other storm drainage improvements, more towards the west side of town in that area. So, does that kind of answer your question?
Yeah, that was helpful information. It's just, it's, I think everybody feels the frustration of how do you channel water when you're already at sea level? And you've, you've got a flooding situation. You can't put the water anywhere. You can pump it, but where's, it, it, you know, it's always gonna sink back and, and rise up. So it's, it's very challenging.
Right. Yes, even for a pump station, you know, you really have to have tide control in place on all of your outfalls, because if you pump it across that tide control back into the river, if there's an open pipe somewhere, it's, it's, you know, circulating, flowing right back in on you as fast as you pump. So, yeah, it's, it's a lot, lot to look at, and yeah, can be a frustrating situation. You're right.
Well, we don't want to end up in the sinking ship, so we appreciate all that you and your team are doing.
We'll, we'll keep looking at it and try to, try to come up with more solutions.
Garo?
Thank you.
This is from your wheel. What, what are, what are the probabilities of doing retention ponds for some of these areas?
Um, yeah, and that's not out of the question either. It's storage, storage basins and storage areas are certainly, certainly an appropriate measure to try to reduce flooding and, you know, give that stormwater somewhere to go and somewhere to collect. That, I guess the downside of those is they, they take up space. They take up land area, which, you know, could be used for other, otherwise commercial residential areas. But, you know, if, if we can get available land, then that's certainly an, an option as to some kind of storage facility there.
Would, would that be something that would be optional through the land bank, perhaps?
Possibly. It, you know, it possibly could. You know, it, it may be.
I didn't think I quite understood that question about would that be possible through the land bank?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I know enough about the workings of the land bank as to, you know, how properties transferred through that, but I can certainly talk to John Hunter and, and learn more about that and investigate those possibilities.
Are you talking about using some of those properties to create a retention pond? Commissioner Williams?
Yes, yes. If, if it's in an area where, or if the properties are located in an area where we have a lot of flooding, you know, hazards or whatever, through the land bank, and I don't know, Corey probably can give us more, you know, legal ramifications of this, but be able to use those properties to, to create a retention pond or, or storage facility for, you know, overflow.
Right. We can look into it, you know, to kind of, I guess, maybe give you a little perspective. We, on the College Park project, we, we did look into retention ponds as a solution over there, and it turns out that in order to provide enough storage in that pond, that it would take in an area the size of College Park neighborhood. You would have to get rid of, turn the entire neighborhood into a pond to provide enough storage area for the neighborhood, you know. So it's, you know, that, for that area turned out to not be a practical solution. But I just say that to kind of, kind of give you an idea of, of the land area and stuff that's kind of required for these things and the, some of the, some of the amount of storage that's required. And it will be different for different areas of town, certainly, but there's something we can look into.
Garo, you, you mentioned underground storage, and there were, someone talked to us about underground storage of waters in certain areas, so it can flow into underground storage and then it to seek out underground to the outlined areas. Also, my question to you is about, how much would our back contract hold? As we start trying to siphon up some of this water and some of the neighborhoods that it comes in so fast? And it may not be enough, but I know it would be something to alleviate some of the stress.
No, see, it, it only holds a few thousand gallons of water, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't make a noticeable difference. It's not, it doesn't have enough capacity to make a, make a dent in some of these flooding areas. The only large tract of land that we have that I know of is, is Fenova. It's the only, only large tract of land that, that I can remember. We do have one retention pond. Does everybody know where it is?
Probably Liberty, Liberty Roll Off.
Only one that I, and now I say this, only one I know about is right there on Altama. I can't, is that I Street where it dead ends? There's a fence around it?
You're talking about right there by...
Learning Academy or...
I think there's more than you think.
That's the only one I know of.
It's one of them, and they know you part.
Yes, it is.
Okay. There are about 15 to 20 in town, certainly, certainly not municipal. There are about fifteen to twenty in town, certainly, certainly not municipally owned, but private, private sites included. They're probably fifteen to twenty around town. A lot of them are dry ponds, which, which means that they don't, they don't hold water all the time. So they're, they're not as noticeable as ponds, but there are.
Gero, why don't we get those identified and start really taking advantage, looking at them?
Well, they are identified. I mean, we, we report them, we inspect them every year on our, our MS four permit reporting. But like I said, they're private, you know. So. You know.
Can we get a list of where they are?
I can give you a list of all of them.
Yeah, I'd like to see it. Like I say, the only one that I've seen is, is the one right there that I was talking about. I'm, I'm sure. And I mean, it's the most visible and it's always dry.
Right, right. Yeah, I, I'll send you a list of, of all of the ones we have in town.
Yeah. Yeah, I would think everybody would want to see that and see what we could go from there with.
Okay.
Okay, any more further questions or comments, commissioners?
I'll make your motion to approve the Georgia Water and Environmental Services Agreement in the amount of ninety-eight thousand five hundred and eighty dollars for design and permitting of tide control structures as designated in the coastal incentive grant.
Second.
I'm probably motion second for the approval of the agreement with Georgia Water and Environmental Services in the amount of ninety-eight thousand five hundred and eighty dollars for design permit or tidal control structure designated coastal incentive grant. Are there any further questions or comments? Hearing the all in favor, please say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Opposes? Hearing none from the posers, I believe the ayes have it, the motion cares. Thank you. All right, item, item number five, thank you, Gero.
Yes, sir, thank.
Item number five. Consider approval of resolution number twenty that's twenty-one dash thirteen, recognizing Georgia Cities Week, October the third through the ninth, two thousand twenty-one, and encouraging all residents to support the celebration and corresponding activities. Ms. Regina McDuffie, our city manager, will be presenting.
Thank you, Mayor. We have been planning and we introduced the concept of the Georgia Cities Weeks in a meeting a couple of weeks ago, and we have continued our planning for the Georgia Cities Week celebration. We have a lot of activities, as I had reviewed prior to. I will try and share my screen right now and see if we can just kind of go and look at the activities. Of course, you know that the mission for this is from GMA and they have provided this opportunity for us to kind of inform the public, make them aware of the services that the city performs and educate the public on, you know, how the city government impacts their lives every day. So we are planning a week of activities during October third through the ninth. I've gone through those before. I'll just briefly review the, we have equipment displays by the Public Works Park, Police and Fire on October fourth, fifth and seventh. We have an art and essay contest that's being done through the Glen County School System, and that's going on now and will end on September thirtieth. And we will bring back awards to be presented on the October sixth commission meeting. We also have a scavenger hunt that's going on right now and it's on the website. So I challenge all of you to look at it and maybe see if you can, you know, answer some of the questions. It's really exciting. It'll take you to Overlook Park, it'll take you to the Marshals of Glen, take you to Mary Ross Park and other places around the city. That particular event, it ends on September thirtieth, and we hope to award those at the meeting on October sixth as well. We have a walking tour that's going to be downtown and culminate at the Marshals of Glen Library on October eighth. And then in the afternoon of October eighth, we're going to do a food truck frenzy to show our appreciation for the city employees. They will be invited and we'll have a small band, have some other activities for families and have the food trucks there in Mary Ross Park on October eighth. The full week will culminate with the citywide cleanup, which is being done in conjunction with the Keep Golden House Beautiful and our Public Works Department. And we're inviting all of our neighborhood associations, all of our civic clubs, our adopt a mouth organizations, churches, businesses and everyone to participate. And we do have a page on our website. Let me see if I can bring that up. Not sure where it is on our website, but if you go to our website, you can see the, see the cities page and it has a really nice. It's a really nice. See if I can get it up right quick. Where we have our website and we have a Georgia Cities tab where you can go and go straight to the Georgia Cities Week page and it has all kinds of information. So thank you for being a part of this celebration by approving the resolution designating October third through the ninth as Georgia Cities Week in City of Brunswick.
Any questions, commissioners for Ms. McDuffie? On this resolution? I, I would like to say a thank you for, this is one, first time we have participated in, in something GMA has, has brought up, especially Cities Week, Georgia Cities Week. I know they have it out from each year to year they have it and we have not. So we are beginning to be recognized across the state as, as a city that's on the move. And it is really good, good to, to see that, good to feel that, hear that. When we go to GMA conferences, people are looking to see the leadership from, from Brunswick. And I appreciate all that, that the staff is doing and also the leadership of this commission. So with that, commissioners, I will entertain a motion on this resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer motion to approve the resolution for the Georgia Cities Week as presented by Ms. McDuffie.
Back.
There's been motion second for the approval of the resolution number twenty-two-one dash thirteen, recognizing Georgia Cities Weeks, Week. Are there any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposes? Hearing none from the opposing side, that motion cares. Thank you, thank you, thank you, commissioners. All right, moving right along. Item number six. Consider approval of COVID vaccination incentive. Ms. McDuffie, our city manager has presented this as well.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that. As you know, you know, COVID is still a just tremendous concern for us as a city, as a community, as a nation. We have seen impact over the last two months of COVID just coming back into the city population and especially hitting our city employees and staff. Over the last two months, we've had over fifteen cases of COVID, positive cases. And, you know, our staff continues to be impacted by it, not only by the people who have gone through illnesses, but also the people having to be quarantined, people having to work extra hours because of people being off work and out of work. So we want to, of course, try and look at what we can do to get our people protected. We did a kind of a survey of our employees and found that we were only forty-six percent vaccinated. So it's under fifty percent of our employees that are vaccinated at this time. And so we, we are looking at providing an incentive for people to get vaccinated. We looked around and of course, you know, we're never trying to invent the wheel, we're only trying to keep it turning. So we looked at some other cities and the other cities were giving bonuses and five hundred dollar payments for their employees to get vaccinated. Two cities that we looked at in particular, Gainesville and Motry, implemented this incentive and both of them, I think, are at like seventy percent plus of vaccinated employees at this time. One of the significant things, and I know there was a question raised about the amount. And of course, I, I was kind of a little bit hesitant about the amount myself. But then I thought about it. One, it's, it's a really good incentive. I think it'll get the attention of the employees. They'll pay attention to what we're doing. If they're not getting, they're certainly will pay attention to it. But the other thing that you can look at is the fact that five hundred dollars is a significant amount. But if someone has to be hospitalized for COVID and they are a city employee and under our insurance, we will pay thousands of dollars for that person's medical care in the hospital. So compared to them going out and getting a vaccination and us giving this incentive, you know, we want to avoid as many of those hospitalizations, those medical expenses as we can. And I think this is a, you know, a good way to do it. Based on what we calculated, it would cost us about seventy thousand dollars if we get about seventy-five percent of our people vaccinated. I wish we could get a hundred percent, but I know we probably won't attain that. But about seventy-five percent would cost us about seventy thousand dollars. And we think that because of money coming into the budget this year, we should already be able to cover this expense with funding that we put in for the ARPA to support the budget for this year. So that's my presentation and I did, in your.
You're muted.
Sorry, I was trying to minimize my screen and I muted it. But we put a flyer in there, something that'll go out to the employees just to get them vaccinated and tell them where they can go, gave them as much information as we could on the locations here locally, phone numbers. And I checked all of these websites. You can go to register, get vaccinated. It doesn't take a long time. I mean, if you go to the hospital, you can be done in fifteen, twenty minutes. So hopefully this will be an incentive, you know, that you all can support and we can hopefully get some more of our employees vaccinated. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. McDuffie?
Yeah, Regina, the President Biden has just mandated that organizations with a hundred people require their employees to get vaccinated. Are, are you aware of that?
I am. According to GMA, that does not or should not apply to local governments. And that's the last word I, I would defer to Brian if there's anything in addition that has been published. But according to the analysis that was done by GMA, we would not necessarily have to comply with that.
I think I, I received the same literature from GMA that they believe that city and county employees are going to be exempted or are considered exempted.
Yeah, I, I think the governor hasn't complied with that order as well, coming from, from the president. Yeah, I think he, he's looking at that before he make a decision to, to say all state employees will have to comply.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything from the governor. I, I just heard President Biden say, and that's, that's all. I, I think we should, should be considerate of that. I certainly think that we need to get everybody vaccinated, I really do. I, I, and I think perhaps some incentive is, is going to be required to do that. I don't know about five hundred dollars. So I, I, when I saw this, I, I, I just, I, I agree, it'll get your attention, Regina.
To be honest with you, Johnny, I, I had a.
It'll make you act, I agree with you.
The department heads will tell you, I, I was not necessarily inclined to begin with. But when I looked at what other cities did and, you know, it was effective. And again, my thoughts are, if we have one person to go in the hospital, it's gonna cost us, you know, ten times five.
And I think it's seventy-seven thousand dollars is what the average case costs. So somewhere in that vicinity.
So just think about it, if we spend this seventy thousand dollars, that's just one person being hospitalized.
I agree, I agree.
Well, when you, when you talk about compliance, he's mandating that, but there are also other stipulations that if a person has religious belief or if they have some other type of medical reason, or they will be subjected to weekly testing. So that still gives people an out.
Yes. Also, I, I went to organization on Jekyll Island today to talk about, you know, their incentive, their vaccination process. And I was, I was, I learned that they give out two hundred and fifty dollars for incentive. And then while I was there, also I learned that other organizations here in the city of Brunswick are giving out as much, up to four hundred dollars for, for incentive to, to get people vaccinated. That what, what he told me was, they are looking at to be part of the solution and not part of the problem and trying to ensure that, that, that they can stay operational because the people will be vaccinated and they won't have to worry about someone's not coming because they realize other individuals are not vaccinated and, and bringing them into harm's way. I, I do know that the hospital probably is giving out incentives as well because they are the frontline people who people are bringing, bringing the disease right to them, as a matter of fact. So this, this may be something, if we can get our, our, our numbers up, our, up to seventy-five percent, that, that would be extremely, extremely well.
Well, I guess you could, you could also look at it as a wellness check.
Yes, true, you're right, sure enough.
You know, you, you, you need to consider too that, because the booster was talked about several weeks ago really strong or a booster, and now they are questioning whether or not a booster is needed. So, you know, are you gonna have to incentivize a booster also? I'm just throwing this out there for thought. This is not anything about what we're talking about other than just for thought, okay?
Well, I, I like the fact they were giving our employees up until December thirty-first, which is giving them some time to think about it. And I guess the ones who have already had, had the vaccination, I don't know when we will give them that, that, that monetary incentive, whether it be toward the end of the year or would it be immediately? I, I don't know.
What the, what our plan is, is to give the ones who are vaccinated time to present their information, be verified, and then we'll collectively, you know, pay it out initially. And then once after then, the ones who become vaccinated up through the end of the year will also receive the bonus. And, you know, the reason that we thought about it this way is because when we first thought about, you know, people were given bonuses for people to go get vaccinated. But we wanted to show appreciation for the people who had already taken that step and taken that preventive measure and say thank you for, you know, being conscientious enough to make this decision to get vaccinated when we allowed it or offered it earlier in the year.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think these are unprecedented times. It's been decades since we've had some sort of a population-wide, really a national and international-wide crisis like this, that some preventative measures have been established. I would like to see us at least wait a little bit longer to see what that executive order looks like as it comes down, how's that gonna affect people? I don't necessarily agree with incentivizing to the, to the degree of five hundred dollars per, per employee. I don't necessarily agree with incentivizing to the to the degree of five hundred dollars per per employee. I feel like we could probably come off of that. But I I think it's important because, you know, you've got to, you've got to utilize the measures of control that are available. And if you can protect families from going through the crisis of a loved one who has to endure COVID and the life-threatening situation that could incur would be huge. So I I do think that we need to be very conscientious and protect our employees. But I I would rather be a little bit more cautious on moving forward on anything at this point. I think this is a good discussion to have. But I'm I'm just not certain that we need to take this action now at the level that we're looking to take it.
Well, thank you. I I I tend to agree with you somewhat in fact that it's this is seem to be against all morals to have to incentivize someone to do something for their own health. But we we had to do that when we asked people to quit smoking. And that was something for their health too as well, to incentivize them for for doing that. But in light of what our city manager said about how much it would cost us when I'm with our insurance and medical, right, it seemed like a small drop in the bucket for for that. If it gets us to where where we wanna go and if it puts a a relief on our employees that they will come to work because they realize that people right next to them have gotten vaccinated as well. So that that's that's my two cents. And I I believe too also we're having issues with our cemeteries that they're filling up quicker than quicker than we really actually thought they would. They are, and we're having to have funerals or burials four and five, ten, four and five at a day on Saturdays and so forth. And it is pretty soon we will be asking, we'll be doing funerals on Sundays, which we haven't been doing in in quite a decade, I'll say. So this is really real what's happening to us. And if we can do anything we can to be part of solution to curb this 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 virus, and I'm all for that.
Mr. Mayor, I I would just like to chime in. I was kind of waiting because what you said just then was very, very, very real statement. Even this past weekend, if six funerals, or seven actually, and I've got nine this coming weekend. So it's it it the numbers are overwhelming and 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 a lot of it is a result of COVID. Not all cases have been COVID, but a lot of them have been a result of COVID. And and we're 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 really in a crisis and I think that it's important that people get vaccinated. If we have to incentivize it to get our our city employees vaccinated because as Ms. McDuffie said, if we have one employee that goes in the hospital, we're looking at, you know, insurance-wise, about seventy thousand dollars. What happens if if it's five? So now you have three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a matter of moments where where, you know, if we can incentivize it at seventy thousand dollars and 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 get folks vaccinated, I think we'll be in a lot better shape than what we are right now. That's just my two cents.
Any other comments?
I I I I agree with, I agree with the incentive. I agree with I really agree with everything everybody has said, which is kind of crazy, but let me bring that into perspective. It's because when I look at this stuff, I look at it on the wellness side of it, on the financial burden side of the safe workplace side of it. I look at it on the legal side of it as well. So my question would be, I guess, a legal question to Brian, is we we know that and and the perception that people have had of this vaccination. And I think in in a lot of people that I've spoken with and I'm work, we're working with Dominique Mack. She's doing a great job trying to bring all of the stakeholders and stuff together to try to tackle the this as an entirety, an entire community problem or situation or concern. So my legal question is, or I I say this because people have a misconception that this is some type of test, whatever their reasonings are. But the biggest that I've heard in the community is that they are perceiving this to be some type of cure. And it's not a cure. It's a vaccine. It's a booster to your immune system to help you to resist this. And so the educational part of this needs to be demonstrated and it needs to be sounded to to the highest mountains. And I and I think that's a biggest part that we're missing is the educational part of it. So with my saying that, Brian, legally, have we looked at the ramifications, fallouts on every side of this? We're we're saying we we desire to incentivize this. But what could be the potential fallouts legally from this? If a person feels that, okay, they're being coerced or they're being whatever because of actions that we may, we may perceive to be a safe workplace necessity. So that that's, those are my questions.
Or if they become ill.
Yes.
Tough, tough to answer in in some sense. However, I will say that, you know, this is obviously a hotly heavily, I should say, heavily discussed item amongst city, other city attorneys, including GMA. GMA did issue a Q and A and I've talked to Commissioner Harris saying city manager about this and part of why we, you know, sort of have backed off the idea of mandated mandating vaccines and and going in the different direction as to incentivize vaccines is because it obviously leaves a larger gap to allow an employee to make that choice. You know, the Department of Justice just issued an opinion on July sixth, two thousand twenty-one that that states that employers, including local governments, can require employees to be vaccine vaccinated even for a vaccine that is that the FDA has approved under emergency use. So that the the question of whether or not we can mandate vaccines has been answered by the Department of Justice. It's just, you know, it's it should we? When we discuss mandating, we of course looked at, I looked at multiple policies of what people were putting forward and made sure that there were the exemptions in there that Commissioner Harris touched on, Mayor Protim touched on that we made sure we had a religious and a medical exemption. But again, we 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 moved away from that because there was, I think, direction from, you know, the federal level, White House level, that stated, you know, that you could offer incentives, including the use of ARPA funds for the the purposes of incentivizing vaccines. From a legal perspective, I think that the city is in a good position to to move forward with this program. To ask to the questions of what might the the fallout be, I I think it's very difficult to answer that. I mean, you know, again, has having previously been stated, I am no infectious disease expert. That is, I will say that upfront. But, you know, I I don't think there can be a I might reserve some comment here, but I don't think a legal action could arise if somebody were to get vaccinated. And then ultimately, some issue occur, whether they still end up getting sick because as we stated, it's it's not a cure. It's not an outright bar to to becoming infected. But it is something that's intended to be put in place to help you, your body fight it if you were to be infected and potentially, you know, prevent it. Certainly attempt to prevent any hospitalization or further, you know, catastrophic health event. But incentivizing it still leaves that, it leaves that choice. You know, it it's still purely a choice of an employee of whether or not to go and get vaccinated. So I think from a legal perspective, we're probably in a better position to incentivize rather than mandate. And I think from a legal perspective, it's tough, you know, to say that there would ever be a, you know, because there's no mandated direction from the city, it'd be tough for there to be like a legal issue that would arise after the fact.
Also, I just want to say, also, today when I went to go talk to an organization on Jekyll Island, I said they were incentivizing their employees to award a two hundred fifty dollar incentive. However, they were also mandating that they get they get vaccinated or else they would not have a job as well. So it was them, it was on the positive side and also on the negative side. We are not doing that. We we are not, we are, we're giving our employees a choice to do it to to actually get the vaccination or or not. And we're incentivizing the ones that do, that do get it. That's that's where we are. But some organizations are mandating, telling people, if if you want to work here, then you have to get it or else you will not be working. And they put deadlines into a personal habit by this certain deadline, then then they will be, they would no longer be there. However, they did say that once they do become vaccinated, that they do have opportunity to come back if the job is available still open. So here we are, commissioners. And before I ask for a vote, are there any other further comments? I appreciate the lively discussion and that that we we can have this and and so we can either decide what we want to do, what would this, someone said a hot topic, a priority topic, I'll say. So no further questions or comments. Madam Clerk, please call a roll for me, please.
Do you have a motion on the floor, Mr. Mayor?
Well, excuse me, you're right. I don't have a roll.
We 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 don't have a motion.
Oh, please excuse me. That that you're right. I'm a little ahead of myself.
So so let me, can I ask this, Mr. Mayor? I'm sorry.
Yes, you can.
Is there, is there a, we we've discussed this. So is there an alternate? Is there an alternate amount that is being suggested?
You can put it in if you like. It's it's up to you. It's it's not, what's been presented by the city manager is five hundred dollars. Okay. If we make a motion for something less or something more, it's totally up to this commission.
And that's five hundred dollars for both shots?
Yes.
Anything about a booster if a booster comes up?
No.
Okay.
And so and so we're 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 not looking to incentivize a booster?
Not at this time, no.
I don't think we should be.
We either what? No.
I'm with you.
Okay. All right, okay. We had this this crossroads. What's been presented to us by our city manager is a incentive of five hundred dollars. Had a full series shot, one or two, whatever it is, completed on or before December thirty first. And also to give the employees who've who've already had the series of shot, a one-time bonus five hundred dollars. That's what's been presented by her, but I need a motion.
With this money, let's let's be sure that we, Regina, tell folks where this money is coming from. Instead of using an acronym, tell them exactly where it's coming from.
Okay, we are designating or going to pay it from the American Rescue Plan Act funding. And this is for COVID impact. And it also, you know, allows for premium pay. And instead of doing, you know, premium pay in the manner that it said, this incentive will be paid as such.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, so I was going to say, so it is money that, you know, we have right now in our coffers for COVID impact.
Yeah, such as buying PPE equipment and so forth like that that we have done in in the past. And we have also purchased PPE equipment to, in the past, to give to some of our our schools as well. We have done that in the past. Just trying to be very, very supportive of everyone in our in our community. So I know we've done that.
And and how much of that money do we have right now total, Regina? How much do we have left?
Well, we have, I mean, we designated most of it, but we haven't spent any of it. So we had a half a million dollars that was put into this year's budget to support the budget. You know, basically, we are running really well with our revenues. So, you know, this impacted money is infused into our budget. Well, you know, we have available for this purpose.
Great.
And again, GMA has issued guidance that, you know, these types of funds, the ARPA funds could be used, you know, to help incentivize this program, to help you know, purchase contact tracing software, various uses that I think the city manager is actively pursuing. So I I think it's an appropriate use based on the guidance we've received.
I'd like to make a motion that we we give this more time. I realize that might not be the optimal decision. But there are some things coming down from higher up that might have a profound effect on this. So I'm gonna make a motion that we defer a decision until the first meeting in October, which would be October the sixth.
I got a motion. Do I have a second?
Can we discuss, can I make a comment on it? We have to remember now, even with with mandates, the mandates do not say that they have to take the vaccine. This it give, the federal mandate gives them options, even under that mandate.
Okay, I got a motion and.
There's still options.
Yes, I got a motion. I still need a second. Okay, I don't have a second. Then that motion fails for lack of a second. Are there any other motions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer a motion that we move forward with the vaccine incentives presented by city manager.
I've got a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? Port of order, I'm I'm Brian Corey. Can the mayor second any? Any motion?
Yes. You're you're an executive commissioner with voting rights.
Yeah, I second that motion. Okay, it's been properly motioned and seconded for to for to accept the the incentive package as presented by our city manager. Are there any further questions or comments? Madam Clerk, now please call a roll.
Commissioner Kason, how do you vote?
I vote no.
Commissioner Williams, how do you vote? Commissioner Williams?
Did he drop off?
Okay, we're gonna skip to Commissioner Martin. How do you vote?
No.
Mayor Protim Harris, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams, how do you vote?
There he is. I think he was frozen.
Commissioner Williams, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Harvey, how do you vote?
Yes. Okay. That motion is three to two. A motion carries. Please, City Manager, as Commissioner Martin said, and Commissioner Mayor Protim said, please, I'll let the people know exactly where those funds are coming coming from. And and the fact that let the, please let the public know where these funds are coming from. And also, please let them know the fact that it's a wellness check, really in a wellness that we're looking for, trying to get our employees well. And also the fact that that the disparity would be if we get someone sick and how much we have to pay out. So the difference, excuse me.
We will try and educate as much as we can, not only the public, but our employees to so that they will understand the impact of this and what we're trying to prevent and how much it, you know, can help our productivity. So thank you.
Right, and also employees. Right, and also employees do not have to do this. I mean, there's a choice. And the matter, please state that they do have a choice. They don't have to participate at all if they don't want to.
That that's that's my that's my point. This is not an exact.
Yeah, we will um distribute information directly to each employee.
Thank you. Okay, um. Uh, next item on our agenda is item number seven, consider approval of FY 2021-2022 budget expenditure for improvement at Old City Hall. City Hall, Ms. McDuffie, you presented that too as well.
Yes, Mayor. Um, this is just a, um, we actually have money in the budget to cover these expenses. Um, but we didn't have it where, you know, we were specifically going to purchase um this audio visual. I mean, audio video equipment. So I wanted to bring it to the commission because the estimated cost that we got was um pretty extensive. So right now, what we're doing is we have um a vendor that's going to look at designing um a audio video video. We had one vendor to come and give us a price, and that's what is in your packet. We didn't, it was a quote for work to be done. But I wanted to make sure that what we got was going to be um something that enhances and also, you know, is very, uh, I guess, workable in the area in the commission, um, meeting room, you know, which we use as a courtroom. So we are going to have some a design done, and then we'll get prices for that design, um, quotes um for that design once it's done. Um, because I didn't, well, we, like I said, the quote that I included in the packet, um, it kind of just outlined what equipment was going to be placed or how the equipment, what type of equipment. But I wanted to make sure we saw exactly what this impact was going to be because I want it to be something, you know, that not only is going to be very useful, it's going to eliminate all the issues that we've had internet-wise, um, audio-wise, video-wise, because you know how important it is going forth with having, um, you know, the meetings in the commission room. I think, you know, we're going to continue to have ver partly virtual meetings or at least have it open to the public where our meetings are virtual and have the live streaming and that kind of thing. So um going forward, we are going to look at having this um audio visual uh design done and then go into a contract. And I will bring those quotes back to the commission when we get those for the work to be done at the um Old City Hall. I I'm trying to, I wanted to get this done pretty quickly, but you know, right now during COVID, it's hard to get anything done. And, you know, of course, we have to follow our purchasing guidelines. So
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So I'm asked, I'm just kind of updating and asking um the approval to go forward. Because like I said, I don't want to go into detail about the cost estimates that we've seen. But the price is substantial, so we're probably going to have to just come back and um provide that to the commissioners later.
Questions, commissioners? Well, it'll be
Is this something that's going to be addressed with the finance committee?
Um, well, we can, yes, and we will bring it back to the finance committee when we um when we get those quotes.
So what are you asking us to do now?
I'm just asking you to acknowledge that the budget will be changed to um incorporate this amount. I mean, these uh activities in it. I am going to ask that the budget be adjusted, and it's not, I'm I'm not asking for money to be put in the budget because I don't think we need to add money to our budget right now. We have money in places that we can um use for these activities.
So you're asking for a a an amendment or reallocation of funds?
Right.
Okay.
I can give you an amount, um, but it's, you know, I'm not sure how much it's going to be estimated. The audio video is going to be between $30,000 and $40,000. Um, and then I'll go into the other after that.
Well, we do know we need uh better audio and video for Old City Hall. Um, we we have been uh trying to piecemeal that for quite a bit now. Uh, and it seems that we're in this virtual, virtual requirement, virtual process um quite quite a bit. And realizing too that that um other organizations use City Hall too as well, like Downtown Development Authority, the URA. Uh, so and um they might be in the need of use of audio, uh, this audio equipment as well. So.
So this is this is primarily dealing with the acoustics?
It's dealing with the acoustics and with the pro the uh internet and the video. Um, and again, one of the reasons I I kind of stepped back from the quote that we originally got is because I didn't know what it looked like, and I want to make sure we know what we're getting. And we know, you know, there's a plan and there's a design put in place, and then we decide, you know, this is this is what it's going to be, and this is what we want. It's not an easy project, especially with the historic building.
Yes, we've been fighting this oh over over eight years, I know. Uh, when I when I was a commissioner, uh, we had the same issue, especially about the acoustics and about Old City Hall. Um, uh, we we've had people come there and they was worried about we didn't record, uh, we did not record our our meetings. Uh, and we've been dealing with it for, I'll say, 18 years. Um, but uh we're here now to do something about it. Uh, and I appreciate the city manager bringing it, bringing the force for us to do that. And and I appreciate the fact that we do have uh, our budget has got has grown, so we're able to do something about it. Previously, I'm sure we was not um dealing with a budget deficit, but now we find ourselves in in a in a great light that we can take care of some of the things that we have put off for such a long period of time.
So don't forget, it took us several, several years to get cushions in City Hall.
Oh, yes, it did. Yes.
Maybe even a decade.
Yes, it did.
Mr. Regina, you're asking for a a motion or you're asking for approval to continue to look into this and and then present uh the financial part of it at another date and time?
Uh, yes, but I want, again, I'm trying to make sure we get this done in a timely manner. I don't want to be next June saying, okay, we, you know, finally finished it. I really would like to move the timetable forward. So I'm hopeful that um we can try and get something. I'm sure we won't be ready for the finance committee at the end of this month. And I would hate to wait all the way to the end of October, but possibly maybe able to present something in between time so that we can get it done, um, you know, approved this by the second meeting in October and then be ready to move forward at that point.
So then, Mr. Mayor, I'll offer a motion that we approve uh the city manager to go out and continue to um price or evaluate the sound system and acoustic system for Old City Hall and City Hall as presented.
I think
There's another part of this too. There's some lighting that is in the uh recommendation.
Yes, I'm going to um present that as well. Do you want me to go ahead and present that, Mayor?
Well, well, you can, but really we're saying expenditure for improvements, any type of improvement. Uh, that's what you you basically said, but you can mention the fact about lighting, so that'd be good to note too as well.
Okay, I'm going to, I didn't, um, I thought that the information on the lighting was sent to you all, but when I looked at the package, it was not. So I'm going to share my screen and go and um hopefully be able to show you what the lighting package looks like. Um. Here we are. We have a concept, and what we're going to, what what I'm proposing to do, I'll get to the bottom line in a few minutes. But I would love to have our buildings for the holidays um decorated in the manner that I'm showing right here. That's Old City Hall. That's the concept drawing that we have for it. Um, and of course, there's a cost associated with it. The bottom line on that one is about $23,000. But that's with everything done. Um, again, let me see, City Hall building. We want to do the lighting. We may not do the, you know, gateway hangings. We probably won't do the little uh nutcrackers. It's based on how far our money will go. So that one, all-inclusive, is about $24,000. So we'll look at how much. Um, and then we have our entrances. We want to look at putting lighting up at the entrance of um Brunswick out on Highway 17, which I think would be really nice because all of our visitors, guests, all the people coming to the islands would see this. Um, that's about $4,000. And then at the other entrance to the city, we have some lighting, and this one is about 350. So total, we already have some um funding designated for the holiday decoration. And we had some additional lighting already planned and some other things for downtown. So we will need probably an additional $40,000 for this. But the good thing is, um, again, I don't think we'll have to increase our bottom line for our budget to do so.
And what what would you say is the longevity or the shelf life of getting this 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 lighting scheme done, which I'm all in favor of? Um, I mean
I'm going to defer to Matthew on that since he's had more dealings with the Christmas lights. But once we put the lighting on the buildings, of course, it will stay there. Um, you know, it's not like it comes up and goes down. It stays there. It just goes on and off. Um, but Matthew, do you have any idea of the longevity?
Um, the uh, these are all uh expected LED lights, so those are lasting a good long time. Uh, we have some, some of our Christmas decorations are LED, and those are seven years old. So um barring any, you know, branch or hitting something and knocking it down or wind blowing something down, the LED lamps should last a good eight to 10 years, I would think. Now, the other things, like Ms. McDuffie said, you know, any garland or stuff like that would come down every year, and that lasts about the same amount of time.
I I I'm happy to see this is now being considered because um every time uh I go out of town, be it having been training or even if I just go for my leisure pleasure, um, I see other cities have their decorations at their city halls, um, their their other municipal buildings, buildings. Um, and and I mean, we we're we're limited in ours. So I'm I'm happy to see we're branching out in our a decorative mindset.
I would agree. This is something I know the Downtown Development Authority has been working towards. Um, and what a great opportunity to draw people downtown. So I would definitely be in favor of it.
And I think, you know, one of the things with COVID, you know, people stay in so much. This is something that they can come downtown during the holidays and enjoy. Um, it's outdoors. It, you know, makes a pleasant scenery and sight, and I really do think, you know, more people who are visiting the area would find it significant to come down south and see the lights.
May maybe we could get on the light show tour.
So would would the buildings, the lights on the buildings, would they be multifunctional? Would you light those at times other than Christmas?
I think it would be appropriate whenever we felt, you know, the need. Um, they would be there. So I think it would be nice to have that opportunity and and um to be able to do that.
Let's do it.
So now, so now on this motion, should, is this motion to be uh for expenditures for impro improvements? Or should it be to uh to to uh amend the budget for reallocation of funds?
Well, the funds are already in the City Hall accounts, so I I mean, basically, they can be moved. And that's why, um, but I wanted to, you know, kind of present this because I didn't want this large expenditure and then this, you know, you all not to have knowledge of it. I think it's appropriate for you all to approve us going forward with both these projects.
Is is this Dixie deck decorations or who who are we talking to about this?
This is universal concept.
Universal.
They now have an office right in um our community.
Good, good.
No one really, uh, well, in a sense, in asking, uh, uh, answering Mayor Pro Tim question about what are you asking us to do and what should our motion be uh for this funding? Realizing the fact that uh it's been stated about uh going through our uh finance committee as well because of expenditure of funds, uh, we're not trying to usurp um their authority of going through them as well. So I that's that's, I imagine that's the reason why this question is being asked. So, um, if we approve this, um, does it still go through our finance committee?
I guess that determination need to be made. Does it need to be reviewed? Now, I will say that the plans for the audio visual, I will bring back before we move forward with that. Um, because again, we don't have, if we had a picture perfect of that right now, then I would be asking for it to be approved. For the the holiday lighting, I would like for that to be approved approved to move forward because we, you know, need some time to get that going up.
So so you you need two separate motions is what I'm hearing. You need one for the lighting and then one for the audio uh designing such.
That's fine.
Yeah, and and I I I would have liked to have seen this in the finance committee meeting before we got to this point.
That's my question.
My apologies, Mayor Pro Tim.
Well, seeing the fact that uh Mayor Pro Tim, you and Commissioner Williams do uh sit on that finance committee. Uh, we apologize. I didn't go through you guys first, uh, maybe for uh expediently expediently to get this going. Uh, however, um it was put in our packet except for the lighting part. Uh, we had opportunity to take a look at uh what we was trying to do. So commissioners, uh, we here have a, uh, we have a motion on the floor that hadn't been seconded but seen need to be altered.
All right. So
Can you please read the motion again?
Uh, commission, uh, yeah, Naomi, you read that motion that Commissioner Williams made? Do you remember, Commissioner, what you said?
Yeah, I I I made a motion to for the um city manager to continue with the I guess the search for the audio video
Yeah.
equipment for uh Old City Hall and City Hall as presented.
Right.
Because at that particular point, that's the only thing she had presented.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
And that motion, probably motion second for to give the city manager authority to move forward with um her request to uh to get the funds for approval to City Hall? Are there any further questions? I hope I stated that correctly.
That's Old City Hall.
Old City Hall, excuse me. All right, it that seems um that we are basically uh in agreement with that. But Madam Clerk, go ahead and call a roll again for me, please, ma'am.
Commissioner Kason?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Harvey?
Yes. Thank you, commissioners. That motion carries unanimously. Um, Madam City, uh, city manager, please, uh, we like what we see. We like that it's going to be looking good. And hopefully that be done before Christmas so we can see uh us, our city lit up as as the mayor Pro Tim said. Uh, we see other cities all lit up, and we want to be in that number just as well.
Well, that that motion was just for
For the audio video.
Yeah.
Audio video, okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Excuse me. I'm a little here to myself. So now we need a motion for the lighting, okay?
I'll make a motion that we move forward with expenditure for Christmas and holiday lights, um, as has been presented.
Second.
Motion second for Motion second for move forward with, um, expenditure of funds for Christmas tree lighting, Chris- Christmas lighting, excuse me, for old city hall? Are there any further discussion, the comments?
Just old city hall.
Yeah.
Right.
Both, both hall, both halls and, and the entrances.
Okay, for, for the city of Brunswick, for the city of Brunswick.
There you go, yes.
Deck the halls.
The only, the only additional comment I would like to make is we would encourage, um, you know, I, I know we have some garden club groups that have been great in, um,
Yes.
doing, moving forward with some, some great things within the historic district and within the city. And I would encourage, um, other volunteer opportunities that people might move forward with. You know, whether it's the marching soldiers, uh, the nutcrackers or some other aspect that would further augment our holiday celebration.
Okay. We got a motion, we got a second. Are there any further questions or comments? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposes? Hearing none, I believe ayes have it unanimously. Thank you so much, Commissioners. All right. Thank you, Madam, uh, City Manager as well. Okay, moving right along, we at our item, uh, on the city attorney item, discussing revision to the city, city of Brunswick, Mary Ross Dock Ordinance and Regulations.
Correct.
Attorney, it's on you.
Thank you. Um, what I've done, created this as a discussion item. Um, I have sent out, uh, or provided, uh, Naomi, and I think she attached it to the agenda. What is currently in place for the city of Brunswick, Mary Ross Park Dock. Uh, we have an ordinance and then in the ordinance, it's contemplated that the city will enact regulations from time to time. Um, just, you know, looking through the ordinance, it, it seems relatively standard and is probably, um, substantial in, in providing, you know, the basics of what the dock, the dock does. But the regulations goes, uh, further in depth as to what is required. And I know there were several questions that arose out of the recent, um, Miss Bonnie issue. And if everyone has noticed, it is no longer at the dock on, in Mary Ross Park. Um, so I wanted to bring forth the regulations as written and just discuss what kind of, uh, requirements are being placed or should be placed on a dock at, uh, a boat that, that comes into port and docks at Mary Ross Park. Both that the, um, the, the ordinance and the regulations contemplate a dock master being appointed by the city manager. It's been historically, uh, placed in the hands of the, um, city marshal or deputy city marshal. The regulations actually specify that it shall be the, the chief of police, but then they have designated the authority typically and historically to our city marshal. Um, because our, our city marshals now, you know, um, not necessarily an employee of the, or a post-certified police officer, it might be something, you know, that we take a look at there and, and either, you know, selecting a, an actual dock master or maybe looking more into what the role is and how they could do, uh, taking care of the dock versus, you know, the city marshal's role is, is far more, um, involving the, the alcohol licensing and the intake of those. The current regulations as written require the attempt to require three things from someone seeking to be docked. Either a certificate of insurance showing that you have at least one hundred thousand dollars in coverage, liability, it's just coverage to cover claims for personal injury, civil, criminal, administrative claims, fees, damages, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, or a bond in form approved by the city manager. I think City Manager McDuffie could probably testify that she has never been presented or reviewed any sort of bond, um, in her tenure here with the city. I've never seen one either. Um, and then, or an irrevocable bank letter of credit in a form approved by the city manager. Again, I don't think we've ever seen anything like that. Um, so in taking those three things into consideration, you know, just looking at them, I think it'd be prudent just to provide that, uh, a dock, a boat seeking to dock at Mary Ross Park have as a requirement, a certificate of insurance showing that they are insured to cover these items. I don't think we need to go down the, the, the path of a bonding or a, uh, irrevocable bank letter credit. I, that's, I don't think that's going to be, uh, feasible for someone coming in to seek to tie up onto the city dock. I think it'd be better to just show that they are properly insured and that the city would be covered in the event of one of the, the losses claimed.
So the city would be a named insured, which we've been seeking for a while, correct?
It, it doesn't have that, um, that we would need to be a named insured, but it, it is that they would have to provide insurance that if as a result of their boat doing something, causing damage, that insurance would pick it up. And I should go back. There's been three instances with shrimp boats down at Mary Ross Park since I've been here. One sunk and was uninsured and the owner was MIA. Um, and we could not find them and the city was liable for that amount of money. Uh, it was quite a bit. A second one, a second boat sunk, took on water, I believe during Hurricane Matthew. That boat was properly insured and the insurance paid out what the, um, the damaged amount was once the cleanup crews came in. The third is the Miss Bonnie, which is the most recent. Thankfully did not sink, uh, and cause environmental damage, nor did I, as far as I know, cause any damage to city property. Uh, so that has not, that was not an issue of whether our insurance would cover it. So we have had this in place and there has been an instance where the insurance did pick up the tab and clean up. So to keep, you know, at the bare minimum, we need to make sure we have in our regulations a requirement of insurance so that we would be covered.
So of those three vessels that the city ended up having to deal with, did any of them actually have permission to tie up at the dock? I mean, did they make an effort to acknowledge that they were tying up and that they were willing to be forthright in paying a daily rate or anything? And if they weren't, then what are we putting in place that gives us some power of authority? That if somebody does tie up to the city dock and they have made no effort to make their presence known nor to pay anything, that we can immediately seek action to, you know, remove their vessel?
Uh, can I ask this question, Cora, before you answer that? It, this kind of ties into that. Do we have anything in place? Is there anything at that dock that says in order to dock here, you need to see so-and-so or call this number or anything like that?
Uh, as far as I know, no, but there, that is part of what, you know, I've, I've obviously talked to Matthew Hill about this and about potentially getting signage to be placed down there. And it's probably something we could do to update and state, you know, you must present this or, you know, some sort of documentation, uh, excuse me, signage down there. Matthew might even, I know he's still on and might be able to speak to the current signage down there. But I think it would, it probably needs to be, uh, updated.
There, there is.
So we don't charge a fee, we don't charge a fee for that?
Well, I haven't, I haven't, I've gotten one paragraph of the, of the regulations. Um, but yes, we do have in the regulations that we should be charging a fee, uh, that a permit fee of one thousand dollars and that, uh, that the, the, any, uh, vessel should be paying in the amount of, uh, I believe it's two hundred and fifty dollars. Um, oh, I'm sorry.
It doesn't sound right. It's a, it's usually based on the length of the vessel and.
Right.
Footage of the vessel.
Matthew, we, we talked about that recently. It was, go ahead, sorry.
The, um, there is some signage there that informs people docking that they're supposed to get permission. Um, and what I talked to this city attorney about was more emphatic signage to put on the face of the dock where a boater would see it, you know, saying that you must have permission to dock here and if you don't have permission, you will be towed. Um, the two hundred and fifty dollars is, that's the commercial loading, um, fee. The, um.
When would that apply?
If there are offloading catch.
Right, if you're offloading.
We don't want that.
I would, I would suggest we remove that from regulations.
Um, the, uh, so boats pay a per foot, per night or per foot, per month fee, depending on if they're, if they were a, you know, just docking there overnight or docking there long term. That's not in the ordinance, I don't believe. I believe that's a separate resolution that was passed. I think last adjusted in two thousand and three, maybe.
That's right. Those are the, the, the last time we've done these, uh, was in two thousand and three.
So what you've included in our packet, is that the most up-to-date of the ordinances?
Yes, and regulations.
All right.
You don't have the dock fee resolution in your packet. You have the regulations and the ordinance. And to go all the way back, I think to the original question, um, in two thousand and eleven, I think the, it was Bo- Bossy Betty. Um, I, I believe that it, I, I can't recall exactly, but I believe that, I believe in certain circumstances, these boats have been provided like temporary reprieve at the dock. Like if they're under an emergency situation, you could tie off and then in order to be, you know, taken to a place of, you know, where they could be fixed or whatever. And then what has happened is they've sort of gotten that ability to tie on and then fled. Uh, that is what.
At, at four AM in the morning or three AM and then they have an emergency.
That is what happened in the most recent one and during Matthew, Hurricane Matthew.
Okay, so it, it sounds like the most immediate action we should take is proper signage, letting boaters know what the deal is. Can they tie up? What, what do they need to do? Who do they need to call? So proper signage. Um, no drafting, no drafting of vessels. I, I feel like we need to close the hole and, and the city's liability first and foremost. And then look at what we ultimately plan, which we, we have gone through the process of planning for the master plan for Mary Ross Park, for access, public access to the water and boating and improvement, improvements to the dock. So we don't want to totally ignore that we, we have future uses that we want to make sure can happen there from a, from a public water access point. But we need, we need to button up the liability that sits there every day for people to tie up for one reason or another and the city's on the hook to deal with the consequences. So I would say to the degree that we need to do that, that's first and foremost what we need to, to do tonight. And then if we need to look towards additional changes and modifications, um, and amendments to, to the dock ordinances that are more sweeping, um, more, more broadly based, we should do that. Does that make sense?
Yes, because I think it would be best to simplify what is going on down there. To remove, I mean, there, the regulations in place at the moment, there's good language in there for a lot of items. No refueling or fueling at that hour dock.
No pumping.
No mechanics, no pumping. I, although it allows for commercial catch to be offloaded, I think that should also be removed to simplify it down. Make sure that we have a dock master in place or a point of contact that is identified clearly on the signage that Matthew and I can work on that. Um, you know, setting forth the hours in which they can come, you know, tie off or, or contact who they need to contact. Um, and then I also would ask that, I, I think would be important is that we add in to whether either our regulations or ordinance that the city of Brunswick will undertake the abandoned vessel procedure in the event that a boat is left on the dock for, you know, X amount of days. Um, because what we ran into is that, again, if you guys recall, the state law for abandoned vessels is not written in a manner to help us address, uh, a shrimp boat being tied on the Mary Ross Park, uh, dock. Now, we, we utilized it and we complied with the law, uh, in order to take care of the recent issues. But I think to have that in our ordinances and, you know, be able to point to it. And we now know the process to go through, um, and go, going through DNR and all that. I think in addressing that in, uh, internally in here would also be applicable or wise to go forward with. Um, really the questions I had tonight is, uh, you know, seeing the, the commercial vessel being able to offload. When I read that regulations, I don't think that is something that is, you know, wise or, or something the city should be really continuing to allow happen. Um, and, and I think.
Doesn't the FDA have some jurisdiction over that too? I mean, if you're offloading catch, you, you've got to have it refrigerated pretty quickly. And I don't think we want people selling things off of boats and vessels.
No, I think there's a lot, a lot of it.
Down is what they do to take care of the refrigeration. Uh, I, I agree with that. At this time, I don't think we need to have people down there offloading their, their vessels. I agree a hundred percent with that. What I don't agree with though, that, uh, has been said is the drafting thing. We've got, what, eleven hundred feet at that dock, is that right?
Six hundred feet.
Six hundred? I thought it was more. Well, well, the drafting thing, if, if you don't allow drafting, I, I'm foot taking in all the, the people that we can down there and I do want to respect that we do, Julie, that we have a master plan. But you want the revenue and, and you have a shrimping season here and, and we don't always get that, but sometimes we do and, and, uh, they need some place to tie those boats up. Also, the drafting thing was done, correct me, Matthew, if I'm wrong, with the cruise line.
Yeah, yes, there have been occasions where we've had two ships that.
So that's, that's pretty good revenue there.
They have rafted.
Yeah, pretty, pretty good revenue there. And, and so I think we need to be mindful of, uh, what we do here, agree wholeheartedly. We got a master plan and whatever we do here, we need to be mindful of that.
Well, I'd like to see maybe what legal has in mind if, if drafting is to be considered. Um, but, you know, I just, I don't want to leave ourselves open further.
Is, is the revenue outweighing the liability?
Exactly, exactly.
Well, you, you, I don't think it does myself. I mean, I don't have any numbers to support that, but I can tell you that it's been done. And, uh, it's, it's mostly an emergency thing. We do not have a front that we had at one time. And we have all of these, uh, commercial folks come in from out of town and it's sort of hard to say, hey, I've got space here, but, but, uh, we've got an ordinance that says you can't use it. Okay, that, that's what I'm thinking about. Uh, we have people from South Carolina, North Carolina that come down here that, uh, that need that dock space sometimes because things are tied up down at the, uh, city market dock. That's just about the only place you've got to, uh, to do a commercial vessel right now. So I think we need to be mindful of that. We haven't been hurt in the past. And, uh, to my knowledge, if we had, Brian, please correct me, okay?
Well, I mean, go ahead, Matthew.
Um, those vessels that Commissioner Casey was referring to, we do have, um, some of those dock each year for a short period of time, a day or less usually, um, orchestrated by City Market. Um, those are, um, very large steel hold vessels that all are happy to provide their insurance, just documents.
They have good cash too.
Yes, they do. So, you know, those, those vessels and that short-term docking is, has not been a problem. It's the, you know, I have an emergency at two in the morning and here I am and you can't do anything about me being here.
Yeah, we need to take care of Miss Bonnie and the likes of that, but we, we need to be mindful of, of some others, other stuff.
Yeah, I agree too. You know, we need to be also mindful of, we have a master plan for Mary Ross Park. And I think if I'm not mistaken, it included a floating dock as well.
Um, yeah, access to the water for the public, exactly.
Yeah, so, so, so we gotta put that in consideration too. As we, as we do our revised ordinance for the dock, uh, we need to at least look at that moving forward as well.
So where does that leave us for tonight, Brian?
Discuss.
Discussing. Yeah, I mean, tonight is a discussion. I think I've already some good direction. You know, and I, I can put together, what I'll do now is put together regulations. I think if we, it really just needs to require amendments to these regulations that still need to be approved by the city commission. And then at, once we have those in place, I think it would be outside of my purview as legal, it would be on the, the commission to really consider how to utilize that asset in the best sense of, you know, looking at those plans and, and what really needs to be done. Is it going to be now a more active? You know, point of, of contact for people? Are people gonna, you know, is it something that the city really wants to utilize to sort of promote downtown and provide better access from the waterfront? But at, at present, so that we can make sure that, you know, and, you know, Regina and I are practically experts in the removal of abandoned vessel at this point. But I do think, you know, we can put together some good regulations and simplify them in, in a manner that gets them approved. They, they need to be, you know, 2003, they need to be modernized anyways. So I think it's an important thing for us. So I think I've got the direction and I'll bring it forward and I, I likely can.
You know, somewhere there is a draft that we worked on since we have been on this, this empanel commission. And this is not it, what I'm looking at, this to my knowledge. I mean, we were pretty close to having something that disallowed a lot of stuff.
It's 2012, yeah, but they never got passed. So I wanted to show you what is on the books now. I'll probably be using some of the 2012 stuff to, to move forward.
Right. I mean, we, we overhaul that thing and somehow it just, oh, I don't know how, but we didn't, didn't hammer the nail in.
Yeah, I knew that was one of the issues that we, we first talked about when I got on the commission.
Yeah.
2013, we were, we were definitely working on those issues because we had just had the the shrimp boat that was down there abandoned that sunk. I think that was kind of like right after Commissioner Harris and I. And I believe Corey was just coming on at that time too.
We all, we all. That is correct. That's correct.
Yeah, I just want to see us close the gap of liability first and foremost, and then kind of go from there.
Okay. All right.
Let's get the master plan out and, and dust it off also, please.
Need to be working on that.
Okay, I believe we're going to do that anyhow, so.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Corey.
Although I do have a need for executive session for real estate and litigation.
Just to let the commission know, we are already working on the Mary Ross master plan. I've had meetings with the staff and with some organizations to talk about it. So that's already in the works.
Great. One, do we have, do we still have money in splotch for Mary Ross Park or have we spent all the money that we had allocated for that on our splotch account?
We have approximately about $450,000 still left and we have some preliminary, you know, things that we want to move forward with. So we will be bringing those to, back to the commission just to let you know where we are in the process. But yes, we do have some money still left to, and we're hoping to, you know, start spending it very soon.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, we have come to the end of our, our printed agenda that's been presented to us. Before I, well, do we have a need for executive session as presented by our city attorney?
I make a motion that we adjourn from regular meeting into executive session for real estate and litigation.
Second.
All right, motion is second for us to adjourn into executive session for real estate and litigation. There are any further questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, opposes have, have the same right. Number on the opposing side, that motion carries. Okay, we will adjourn into executive session, after which we'll come back and, and adjourn our meeting, our regular scheduled meeting. So I see you all in executive session. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Naomi, quick, fast and in a hurry.
Yes, ma'am. We're live. Everybody's listening.
I'm getting better just, I think you were laughing at me because I was the last one to get on. So I'm on now, so you have to, all that laughing got to go.
I think we're waiting on Mr. Kason and Commissioner Williams.
Okay. Yeah, we need him.
No, we were laughing because I told Naomi to make sure this was quick, fast and in a hurry.
Yeah, I like your butterfly though.
Thank you.
Which one of those do you want? Quick, fast or in a hurry?
Everybody's on.
No, Commissioner Williams not.
Okay, we'll give him a couple of minutes.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'm here.
Okay, good.
All right.
Yes, okay. Everybody's on board. We, we have come from executive session. We had some discussion and out of that discussion, I believe we have a couple of motions that we'd like to present to this open forum.
Yes, I'm Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to offer a motion to allow the mayor to sign the agreement between Georgia Outdoor Sounds LLC and the city of Brunswick as presented by our city attorney.
Settlement agreement, that's correct.
All right, okay, I got a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I got a motion, you got a second. And Adam Clerk, will you please repeat that motion?
Commissioner Williams made a motion authorizing Mayor Harvey to sign settlement agreement with Georgia Outdoor LLC.
Okay. And then any further questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposes? Hearing none, that motion carries. Thank you. Are there any other motions?
A second motion, Mr. Mayor, is to commit, to allow our city attorney to commit legal actions for the properties at 2400 Reynolds Street as presented.
Second.
Motion and second. Madam Clerk, will you please repeat the motion?
Commissioner Williams made a motion to commence with legal actions in regards to 2400 Reynolds Street.
My second, are there any further questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposes? No opposes, that motion carries. Thank you so very much. Okay, we've come to the end of our, our meeting this evening. I would like to say thank you all for serving with me. I've enjoyed it. I continue to enjoy it. It's been the, the greatest eight years of my life being with this commission. I say it all the time. I'm pretty sure you all know how I feel because I, I I determined that you guys feel the same way about serving, serving with each other as well. Please be, be diligent and stay safe. Do all the things you need to do to keep yourself safe for you and your family and for our fellow employees and for the city of Brunswick. I'd like to see we all back here safe and sound at our next meeting, our next month. Again, like I said, it's a pleasure and an honor to serve with you all. So with, with that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Got a second to adjourn. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I see you all. Thank you so very much.
Go ahead, take care.
Thank you.
Good night, good night.
Good night, everybody.